July 12, 2022, we'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Someone.
Second. Moved and seconded. Markin.
Aye.
Peckins. Aye. Baseball. Aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. If you'd like to make public comment, this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Feel free to step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Now I will close public comment number one and no agency reports. Consideration of minutes. I move up two minutes as presented the 7th of July. This is presented. Second. Moved and seconded. Peckins. Aye. Okay.
Aye.
Baseball. Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
Personnel action just presented.
Second. Seconded. Markin.
Aye.
Peckins. Aye. Baseball. Aye. We have consent agenda. I move up to what consent agenda items just presented. Second. Moved and seconded. Peckins. Aye. Markin.
Aye.
Baseball. Aye. We've been right along. No public hearing items. Additional items, we have consideration of resolution 23-3 uncommitment of fund balances. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The fiscal year ended, so now I'm officially commit and uncommit and all those things. As you are aware, there's a commitment in the general fund of dapple funds conservation. So every time, every time they're spent, we, we uncommit them so that the new balance is correct. In this one, we are uncommitting, they spent $36,509.39 this year of those funds, so. The new balance committed is 698,389.97, which shows up on your next resolution. A commitment of fund bal, a commitment of funds means you have to uncommit in order to spend, whereas an assignment is just an assignment of funds.
Balance resolution 23. Yes. Second. Seconded. Markin. Aye. Peckins. Aye. Baseball. Aye. Next, we have consideration of resolution 23-4 FY22 fund balance resolution.
This resolution will show you the ending fund balance in all of the funds, whether they be assigned, restricted, committed, all of those items, so. Right now, the general fund has a commitment or assignment, excuse me, of 2,241,964. John, it also has restricted story com dollars of 927,346,35.
This I just have a question on the MHDs services fund, I know you haven't zeroed that out. Do you have an idea where you'll figure out if we're still going to hold the region anything?
That's taken care.
It is taken care of.
So Artie and I, actually, we, we decided that we would just wait until July 1st, after she had balanced and posted everything. And then I did a handwritten, backdated to June 30th, so that it zeroed out the balance.
Okay.
So at this point in time, that zero balance is that zero balance.
Okay.
We are done.
Okay. Nice work. Yeah.
I was, we were both a sigh of relief because we didn't go over the service area either, so we were fine there. I think the final check was like 3,500 to the region or something like that.
Good. Thanks for that work on that. Any other questions?
I want you to have any questions.
Can I have a follow-up on resolution 23-04, FY22 fund balance? Moving seconded. Peckins. Aye. Markin. Aye. Baseball. Aye.
Hey, we're back at the end of the meeting and talk about the way we ended here. How's that?
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and consideration of an increase in rent and utility income guidelines and assistance through story county veterans repairs. Good morning.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Right, Bryce is going to run a little PowerPoint here for me. So yeah, we're here, we're here today just based on some, some history that we've been looking at and probably started looking at this back in January, gathering some data. And if you recall, one of my, one of the corolla reports has been zero on assisting veterans with county benefits. So today we're here and I, and I brought this to the commission. They voted five to zero all in favor of coming here today and talking with the board about, about doing an increase. First slide here is our, is our current income guidelines sheet. And if you look at the left, it talks about how many people in the household, what the income guidelines, the maximum income guidelines can be for those households. What we assist in rent, which is 450 or 550 all the way down the line. If, if utilities are included, that's 500 to 600 all the way down the line. And then on the, on utilities, we just pay current amount or budget billing. We don't pay any past due. Okay. Next slide is the three-year, three-year history. So you can see we had 34, 34 total denials. In the last three years, we approved eight. So eight approved, 34 denials. 25 of those are over the income guidelines, nine were for other reasons. Might be they didn't serve long enough in the military. Might be they don't even live in Story County, or they have a other than honorable discharge, but. Now the next, the, the bottom part there was what I did, I went back and I took a look. Let's just say we go with the new income guidelines, how many of the, the folks that we've seen would be eligible? So I thought that, that might be some, a good thing. We can't look at the future, but we look at the past, right? So looking at the 25, I looked at the household average was 2.36. The average monthly take-home income was 1,943. 14 would now be eligible, 11 would not. And to assist 14 with some rough numbers would be around $900.
If it were all at once. Over the course of those three years, it's approximately 3,000 to 3.2.
If you ever get just their, their monthly take-home income, do you look at other assets that they have as well?
Just to, we look at everything. And we look at the last 30 days, so whatever day they come in to apply, we look at the last 30 days, household income. Take, you know, take home, household income.
You don't look at assets, you don't look at other assets, though. Say it needs.
No. Just a money that they would use to, to pay rent and utilities and bills. Yep. Two above study was Woodbury and Johnson. So I threw their veteran population up there, 6,224 for Woodbury. Household number 1, 2, 3, 4, I just, I just have the top four right there. Those are their income guidelines. And then they assist with 720 for 1 to 2, 3 or more, 875. And one thing I found out as I was talking to other counties, you know, in Iowa, we got 99 counties, so we got 99 ways to do a thing. So it gets a little, it gets a little confusing.
Is Woodbury County also at 100% poverty level?
No. No, I don't believe that. If that number is 100%.
Oh.
No, I don't.
No.
No, that, that number is higher than 100%.
Yeah.
And they didn't, they didn't tell me that they went off of 100% or, or, or 150 or what, but those are the numbers that they use. And then Johnson, that veteran population, 5,000, 548, they're at 200%. And so there's a household size and what they assist with there to the right. So I was kind of, I was kind of shocked with that one. All right, next slide. Here's our, here's our veteran population, less, less than those two. Our budget's 4,000, and since July of last year, we used 1,100. We assisted two veterans with $550. And again, that's our, that's our income guidelines for household of 1, 2, 3, and 4. Next slide. Here's the two that are below, as far as population goes, Muscatine, population 23, 34. Income guidelines there is 100% of poverty. However, what they assist with for a single person is 100, a couple, 150, a family, 200. Rent must be cheap there. Well, surprising that one, then Warren County, 3,153, household 1 through 4. I'd say that's pretty close to 200% of poverty, look at those numbers. They do three months max at $500. 500 a month, they can, they can assist three times during the year. Our guidelines is to, we can assist two times. All right, there's the, there's the proposed at a, at 100% of poverty. Again, on the left, the household size, the income guidelines at 100% of poverty. And then we did an increase on what we could assist with by $100. So one person, 550, two or more, 650. And if, if utilities included, 600 and then 700 on that line. Same thing, current, current utility or budget billing utility. All right. That'd be the last. Might be the last slide, right, Bryce? Well, that's, that's the proposal. And I had a lot, I had a lot of different, different options for the commission. I think every time I gave you three, and, and this is the one that they settled on.
We had a 10% increase in 2020 after a previous discussion. And after looking at the two above and two below, having some discussion, we thought that it would be prudent to use the federal guideline and set the bylaws and the decision-making to that guideline. And then we don't need to really come back and continue to hassle the board for, okay, can we do another 10% this year? Can we do another 10% this year? And we can just follow that guideline. With the amount that's been used over the last three years, we're not coming close to what we have budgeted. And we have a lot of veterans that are bringing a lot of resources and federal money into Story County. We'd like to be able to help them out just a little bit more without having to quarrel with or decide exactly where that line is quite so often.
Brad, I appreciate you relooking at the poverty guidelines.
Yeah. Yeah, they changed.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm like.
Where do you get those numbers?
Yeah, and then, and then when I found out they changed and I took it back to the, the commission and so that they understand what they were voting on and they were, they were okay with those numbers. So yeah, that's just what, what Nick pointed out, I mean, every, I don't know, every couple of years, I don't know how often that the federal income guidelines change. I will know, but anyway, then we would just.
But I don't know if they necessarily change or how big.
Yeah. And then we could just like that out in our, in our manual that we operate off of 100% of poverty, so. This would sure help more veterans. I had to give a denial just the other day to a family that was over the income guidelines. Now, I, I took a look at, would they be, would they be over if this was put in place, you know, next month? And they would, because they, they have jobs. And by next, by the time next month would roll around, they would be owed it. So we, so we're not going to be able to help everybody. We're not looking at that, we're just looking to help more. That's just what we do, we help veterans, so. Looking to be able to help more with, with rent utilities. And then on the utility side, we have 1,000 in the, in budgeted. We haven't spent, we haven't spent any in the last year, so. So the only thing that I can come up with is to adjust the income guidelines so that we could help more. And as you've heard, the commission has concurred with that, so. So yeah, any, any questions or?
No. I, I. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Yeah. Right.
We already can. I wouldn't wish that we accept the proposal of the commission to adjust to the, the guidelines, 100% of property guidelines for the housing assistance and to increase $500.
Any to the guidelines? In Houston. Second. Seconded. Markin. Aye. And baseball. Aye. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Going forward to seeing the report next night.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to departmental reports, we have the engineers, what do they report? Morning, Derek.
Morning.
Okay, let me start out on the maintenance work update. First, it's been a pretty busy three months for us, so I've got a lot to cover here. And unfortunately, we've spent most of our time in maintenance, cleaning up flood damage and stuff like that, so improving our road system, so. It's frustrating, but it's what we gotta do. Starting out late April, we had a rain event in the southern tier of townships down south and hit the county pretty hard, and we're still finding some covert damage and a lot of culverts plugged with cornstalks. It's, that's a newer issue, all counties are dealing with it now, do some changes in farming practices. We had to replace a number of culverts that were washed out, mostly on gravel roads. And a lot of them didn't show up right away, we found them as we were out checking things weeks and months later even. One of them that we, last one we fixed was 36-inch covert on the Polk County line. We actually sent an excavator there to clean out the cornstalks, and when he was there, he fell through the road. There was a huge void underneath the road, it washed out. And that's right in the same area, southeast Slater, we have water over R38, which I don't ever remember happening before, but why that happened is there's two twin culverts. Portobello got washed downstream and got stuck in one of the culverts, so we only had one covert open. That's why we had water over R38, southeast Slater, during that April rain event. We got that last covert fixed on June 15th on the Polk County line, and we thought we finally got caught up, and then the very next day, we got the foreign terrain event in the northern part of the county. This event caused water over a lot of roads up there, gravel and paved roads. We had water over E18 and the Gilbert pavement. Still cleaning up cornstalks from that event, didn't have too many pipe washouts fortunately with that event. The issue with cornstalks is where to take them. We're trying to find a, a site in Milford, we call it the Milford debris site. I think P&amp;Z is still negotiating on that site, but that'd be a great site for us in the future to haul stuff like this to. Right now, we're taking a lot of it out to the county home. Not sure what we're going to do with it in the future. Some counties are saying they're trying to compost it. It's hard to burn, so it's got so much dirt mixed in with it, so you end up with a still a pretty good pile even after you burn it, but that's a newer thing to deal with. So that was on June 15th, and then on June 17th, of course, it was a Friday afternoon, our maintenance crews don't work on Fridays, so they work 4:10, so. I was actually out of town in Milwaukee, and I got the text that the pavement had blown up on Cambridge, north of Cambridge on R70. You've probably seen pictures of that one, it was a good foot and a half up in the air. That's due to the expansion of the concrete, and it just all of a sudden gives way. The last bad one we had like that on that road was probably 20 years ago. We've had a lot of in-between, but there are minor, more minor breakups that we could manage this one. We obviously had to close the road right away. Believe we did have one person hit it that we didn't find out till a week later, we heard from the insurance company. We saw evidence about 50 feet down the road, it was some marks in the pavement, so somebody went airborne for about 50 feet. But they didn't get hurt or anything, that's the good news. So we got that closed right away, and then within 15 minutes, I got another text that R70 South of Cambridge was closed as well, pavement had collapsed. That was due to a tile, an eight-inch tile that goes underneath the pavement. Fortunately, that's a bad deal when you have a tile that falls under the pavement, we didn't even know that tile was there. It had broke open, it appears it broke open probably many years ago, just by looking at the hole. It just slowly worked its way up to the top and finally collapsed, so it was a large hole underneath.
So it was a private tile then? It's not a district tile?
That's what we call road tile, it runs along the road. So it's private, it's not a district tile. Private, but county, because it's in the road right away. So we had both closed at the same time, so we did something a little unusual with the north one, we wanted to get one of them opened up. So we tore the concrete out the next morning and filled the hole with rock. That's not something we normally do on a pavement, but we tried it on this one. Signed the heck out of it, had roadwork ahead, loose gravel, speed limit 25, and then bump signs at the thing, but so traffic, you either, one of two things, they almost come to a complete stop, or just blew through it at 55 miles an hour, didn't pay attention. About half the car did that, so it was probably won't try that again in the future, because people just don't pay attention to signs anymore to deal with. But we were able to maintain the rock in a good enough shape, we got through a couple of days with that. The south one took a lot of digging, so we had to wait for utility one calls before we could do any digging. So we got located on Monday and Tuesday, we were able to get the hole open, get the tile repaired and new concrete poured, get that open late that night, and then the next day, we did both patches on R70 North and got that open Wednesday evening. Moving on to our contract rock hauling, we completed that in May, and that covered much of the southwest portion of Story County. That went well, but just let you know, we, this is the first time we've ever seen two price increases for rock in one year. We had a 9% increase in January and another 6% just recently in July, so a total of 15% increase in 2022. So when you have a million dollars, you spend on rock each year, that's a considerable increase for next year. And we're seeing these similar types of increases in all other construction materials, equipment and contract construction work. Moving on to construction projects. The first two on that list, R38 and S27 overlays, I did want to point out, that's, that was a three and a half million dollar asphalt letting, that's the highest, I think, by far we've ever had for asphalt work. The good news, that's why they're starred at the bottom, it says, we probably saved 10 to 15% because they were let in January before the oil price increased. We're actually, I think, seeing more than 10, 15% increase on that now, so. Saved a lot of money there, but the next few years probably going to be a little painful on asphalt projects.
They chicken R38, you're doing all from 170 to 100.
R38, that's from Slater up the, yeah, south of, south of. And why that one's, partially why it's so expensive is it have five-foot bike lanes on both sides, so that has to be overlaid as well, so that's almost a whole nother lane if you add those two together. So it gets, gets costly. S27, the second one, that's actually, we got done with that yesterday, so that's completed, all we have left is the, the white edge line to paint. R38 probably happened, they're saying maybe late August. All the rest, we got eight bridge replacement box covert projects, none of those have started yet. We tend to get pushed off till, till fall on those types of projects and the way the construction season works. Sounds like there will probably start next week on the first one, the Lincoln 20 Bridge. Yep, that's it for construction. Moving on to construction project design. 220 and 13th Street, the Rise Project, we're still on hold that due to some right-of-way acquisition issues. Rabio did do some damage to that road this spring when they were hauling rock trucks on it in very, very wet conditions. They shouldn't have been doing that. So we've had discussions with the city, helping us keep an eye on that better to not let that happen in the future, but we put a bunch of new rock down. And we're sending some of that bill to the city and Rabio. Since we put that down, it's held up pretty well. A lot of construction going out there right now. Buildings and stuff for Rabio lot. We're working with Kelly on E57 overlay for next year, some sidewalk issues with ADA. Dealing with that right now, and we recently had a Title VI, which is the ADA requirement audit from the DOT last month that Alyssa and I worked on, and it looked like that went well. And the last one, working with the City of Maxwell to try to apply for some city bridge funds, that's a separate fund the DOT keeps that you can apply for if just a portion of the bridge is in the city limit, and down there, it's actually two bridges right next to each other. That's about half and half, half city, half county. And run it through the application, it looks like that one might come very close to actually qualifying. We have our time qualifying for their special bridge fund usually, but. So I've sent, pretty much filled out the whole application for the city and sent it to them, asked them to just submit it, that just gets the bridges on the list. It doesn't commit the city to anything, and I haven't heard back from them, I emailed them again last week, just letting them know, or it'd be a great idea to do that. And at this point, I anticipate the county will take care of the rest of the cost, there's like 20% match and doing all the design work, so. Not asking for much from the city, just get it on the list and we can, if we get picked, we can go from there and figure out the funding agreement at that point.
So you haven't heard back from them yet as to whether they.
No, I haven't. I asked them last week, just to let me know if there, if there's an issue, or we have to, I believe, September, October to get it in for this next year, so.
Do you think they understand that it's not asking them to put money up?
Yeah, I was pretty clear on that, so.
Why aren't we just approval through their state council?
Yeah, that's, that's really all I have to do, I gave them the application, they just have to run it through a council and approve, the city has to approve the, the application. And that's applying just to get on the list, it doesn't commit them to anything, we can back out. And a lot of counties do back out, I'm not sure why, our city and county combination, so that, that has opened up a lot more that are down the list. We, we get 18 points currently and 19 qualified last year. We, we get eighteen points currently and nineteen qualified last year. So we're real close to that cutoff and we get the bridges inspected. Again, this winter and I've talked with our bridge inspectors to um. Any way to get an extra point or two out of that would get us on that list. And they don't think there'd be a problem getting that extra point or two in. Because it's based on the bridge inspection report. Um moving on to uh E fifty-seven covert. Uh that's one we recently discovered near highway sixty-nine that's in need of replacement. It's a really deep covert again, so we're looking at boring it. And the DOT's got a contractor and they're doing a bore under highway sixty-nine for their project. Uh so we're kind of piggybacking on that. That's gonna cost about fifty-five thousand. The DOT's project keeps getting delayed due to utility issues. It still hasn't started. It was supposed to start in April. The, the bad part about that is they're closing E fifty-seven for about a month and a half. And now it's gonna probably overlap with R thirty-eight, which is gonna be a one lane road situation. So that's gonna be a little few more traffic issues down that corner of the county uh this fall. Some of the contract maintenance projects we have going on. Um I mentioned the contract rock hauling is completed. Asphalt crack ceiling is completed. We have a couple of bridge deck patching uh projects, uh one on S twenty-seven and Cameron School. Then another one on Hickory Grove and R thirty-eight. Those are two different separate contractors. That's why they're broken up separately. They have not started yet. Payment markings, uh we have a hundred thousand budget for that. We did something, we knew there was a paint shortage. There was last year. We tried something different this year. We went directly to Vogel Paint and uh purchased the paint. And we have a local contractor that could spray it for us. Everything sounded great. We ordered it and I said, you'll get it probably in April and still haven't seen it. So we're getting delayed on that like everything else. They think we'll get it by the end of July, but we've heard that for a few months now. We have just one or two roads in particular, Lincoln Highway. How east is getting pretty, pretty thin on the payments markings there. A local contractor does have a little bit of paint in stock. We might paint just a couple of roads and get their higher priority ones done. But hopefully we'll get our paint and get it sprayed yet this fall. Uh we have liner on Country Club Road, still waiting on the contractor to get that in. And then Denko is kind of a specialty contractor we use that they do, they have a concrete pump to get into difficult areas. And they pump concrete in and do a lot of covert and bridge repairs. And they did like eight of them in the past uh couple of weeks. Uh it's really good work. Fairly inexpensive for extending life on a lot of our structures. Uh FY twenty-two budget, uh wrap that season up. We had uh more than normal carryover items. Due to a lot of the things I've been talking about with delays. That money will still get spent. It'll just get spent out of FY twenty-three, so. More than likely be some budget amendments because of that carryover. A lot of these carrier items, three hundred and fifty thousand just in two trucks. Getting delayed in delivery, uh the bridge deck patching, cover repair, pavement markings. And then all of our locally funded construction work, none of it started before July first, so. Which is pretty typical. We tend to get pushed in after July for most of that work, so. Not only they push back, but that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. We're now looking at possibly spending uh some of that leftover bond money on. So that will increase our carryover balance uh because of that as well. May need some of that extra carryover to help fund our mortigator lease renewal next year. Going to the more to greater lease renewal a little bit more. Um while our lease is not up until March of twenty twenty-four. The long lead time needed for all new equipment now is gonna make this lease renewal a lot more difficult. Like when you turn a car back in for a lease, you give it to them, you gotta have a new car. We gotta have new mortgages right then. We haven't really heard how long it's taking for mortigators, but I discussed with Cat a few months ago and they suggested starting this discussion in August. So next month, we're gonna start the discussions. Yeah, I'm not sure how we're gonna do it because they're gonna have to commit to some way in advance the pricing and all that. So that, that part's gonna be difficult. The one out, we do have, there's a lease buyout. We can just buy the ten mortigators out and then we got them. But. Yeah, that's, we'll have to have that discussion when it comes up. But we are talking in the neighborhood of anywhere from two to four million to do that, depending on how we do it. If we bought them all out, that would be the high four million number, but. Close to two million if we have a similar lease payment than what we have right now. The dump truck, discussed that a little bit already. We've still not received our single act dump truck that was ordered in February of twenty-one. And another tandem axel we ordered this February, we'll probably not see till FY twenty-four possibly. Long delays. Pickup trucks and stuff like that, they're not even ordering. You can't even order them at this point. There's October first is the first day you can even order a pickup. And who knows how long it'll take to get it. Uh fuel prices, as everybody knows, have gone up. Just to give you an example, we spent about three hundred thousand and twenty-one, four hundred thousand FY twenty-two and then anticipate somewhere around six hundred thousand in FY twenty-three. Prices stay similar to what they are now. Kind of a double whammy, the high cost of fuel will probably also reduce the number of gallons sold. So this could reduce our fuel tax revenue. It's based on gallons. It's not on the price. It's on the gallon sold. So that's going down. Right now they're estimating, we're seeing about a seventy percent, seven percent decrease. So that could end up being more than our COVID uh years uh decrease in fuel sales. Uh moving on to the federal transportation bill. This is a, a huge issue for us right now. We're still trying to learn. There's a lot to learn about this. Um it's called the IIJA or bill. It's kind of split into two categories. We have a, a formula based funding coming to Iowa and then a grant based. The formula one's the easy one. It's just a certain amount we get. Uh we don't have to apply for it. But that's the part that we're negotiating with the DOT and the cities on the percentage of it and how much we get of that formula base side. They're trying to keep it where the cities, counties, state are kind of held harmless and the same percentages in the past kind of carried forward. So we should all see increases from that. So that's the good news. The, not all bad news, but the bad news is on the grant side, that's gonna be a lot more difficult money to get it appears the more we learn about it. There's a number of competitive grants in that. Infra BIP, that's the bridge. There's raise SS four A, the safety and then rule. What we've done as a state for county engineers is we've, we formed a committee to oversee some grant applications. And a consultant will be hired to write these grants. We've already got a consultant on board from a grant we applied for last year. That wasn't part of this. Uh it was just a general uh federal bridge funding. But I'll get to that in a second. But so that's what we're looking at doing statewide. And the county engineer such as also looking at not only a consultant, but maybe of, um not necessarily full-time, but hire a, a grant manager. Because it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of work to manage all these grants. So they're in the process of writing a job description and possibly getting that approved. That would be something that would come off the top of the road use tax when it comes to, that's what funds our service bureau. In Des Moines, it comes off the top before uh fuel taxes gets distributed throughout the counties. Oh, definitely. That's gonna be. Yes, I don't know if they've had anybody in particular in mind, but yeah, that's.
And you don't have the consultant yet to write the grants?
Um, I'll get to that in a second. That's pretty much been done for this current year's applications. Because what they're gonna do is, we applied last year for a grant. I got that in here. There was really only eight bridges in that. Story County unfortunately wasn't part of that. That's because the grant that was submitted the year before, we did have a bridge on E eighteen that we were given. So they were trying to spread it out some. And this last grant, in order to be competitive, they had to look for some bigger bridges. So there's only eight bridges in that and that was forty-seven million dollars. Those are all five to ten million dollar bridges you're talking about. We don't have any bridges in Story County of that size, fortunately. So they're just gonna, we got turned down for that application last year. So they're gonna resubmit it uh this year uh as part of the BIP grant. Now let me start with the, only two of these grants, we've got real information on so far. The first one was the SS four A and that's safety. Now. Come to find out, the only way to apply for that grant is if your county has a safety action plan. Story County does not have one in place. There are a number of counties that do. But the more we dug into it, the ones that do, they're, one, they have to be updated and two, they didn't meet requirements of the safety study anyway. So all ninety-nine counties have to get a new study anyway. So we're all starting in the same place. So the plan for the first year is we're gonna submit a grant for all ninety-nine counties to get a safety action plan. That's good, but again, all this money's going to consultants instead of fixing roads. So I don't like that portion, but. So what we gotta do. So the first year is to get safety action plans hopefully approved for all ninety-nine counties. And then after that, each year it will be a new grant um we can apply for. So down the road in the next few years, we can apply for actual funding, but it has to be addressed in that safety plan, that issue. Uh the other one is the BIP, the bridge uh funding. That's broken into a couple of categories, larger bridges and smaller bridges. Larger bridges is a hundred million and over, so. I don't think there's any county bridges that fall into that category. So we're looking at the smaller bridge category. It's a two and a half million dollar minimum to apply for that bridge funding and we don't, right now, we have one bridge on Lincoln Way, but it's not. Close to being replaced. So we don't have any really in the hopper right now that really qualify for that, so. Uh we're gonna have to bundle bridges together to come up with that minimum. There was a webinar last Friday. I've been attending as many webinars as I can to learn more about it. And there was one last week that got into the actual application. So I'm finally able to view the application for the bridges. And it's quite involved. The categories for selection. It's gonna be difficult for us as an individual county, um especially to qualify for any of these bridges. Grants. Um and the big one is uh. I see is the freight movement. One of the categories is mobility and economic competitiveness and. A lot of that revolves around freight movement and a lot of our bridges, we're gonna have a hard time. Competing with the bigger bridges in other states and. They were talking about, you have to rank medium to high in some of these categories or you automatically get your application thrown out right before it even gets to the selection part. So a number of these categories were in that same. I can read the, there's six selection criteria. Stayed a good repair. That's pretty much the condition of the bridge. And everybody's gonna be in pretty much the same shape there. The bridge is in bad shape. If you're applying for it. Two is safety and that's gonna be, when the feds talk about safety, it's almost always strictly uh accidents and severe accidents and fatalities. We don't have a lot of bridge issues that have a safety issue accident wise. So we're gonna have our time competing there. And then it gets into the real kind of gray issues. Mobility and economic competitiveness, climate change, resiliency and environmental issues. Equity, partnership and quality of life. And the last one is innovation. And bundling bridges is innovative, so that they've already said that. So that's might be the only thing innovative we can do. But the rest of these categories are gonna be difficult to compete for. So that's why we think we're, we're gonna have to do a statewide application. Compete that way. And we actually have a meeting set up with the DOT in the next week or so. I think they're gonna wanna piggyback on our application, I think even to try to even compete for these ones. Um that's, any questions about? Like I say, we're learning as we go. And the other bad part is it's a real quick turnaround. These app cases are due September eighth. Um so that time you'd hire a consultant and try to get um pretty long application. Each bridge, if you bundle them, requires all this information for each bridge. There's a benefit cost analysis that I hear is probably the hardest part of the whole application. Um it is quite involved.
So in two months.
Yeah, so right now, the go, and the county engineer association. They can't really tell counties they can't apply, but they really don't want counties to apply on their own because they will compete with our big grant we're submitting. And there is. Each state is guaranteed two bridges to be funded in this program in the five, five years. So two, two bridges in five years is what you're guaranteed. So they don't really want you competing with the big grant at this point, but. And like I said, after this first year, oh, I did, forgot to mention the committee that was formed. I am the representative for District One. So I represent the twelve counties in the central region. So as part of that, hopefully I can get us in the list for the next uh year's application for a bridge. The one I have in mind is the one. That's the other difficult part of the application. One, it can't be in your first three to four years of your five-year construction program. Because they consider that as, oh, we were gonna fund it anyway. But at the same time, it has to be pretty much designed and ready to go and environmental uh approvals in place or at least in progress. Not many kinds of bridges in that category. If you're not hiring a consultant to design a bridge, you're not gonna build, so. That makes it difficult as well to compete. So. I think most of these, we're probably headed for larger committees and unfortunately, there's no real category for your overall. Bridge condition in your county, something like that. That's what we qualify pretty high. This is based on some other criteria. It's gonna be difficult to compete for, but. As we learn more, I'll keep you updated, but right now it's looking like this first year is gonna be more statewide applications. Yes, and then most of our bridges are not real highly traveled. So moving on to uh some twenty-two Iowa legislation that was passed. The first one is House File twenty-one thirty. That's the all-terrain vehicles. I hope to learn a little bit more about this at ISAC this fall. It's usually where we talk about new laws. But in general, it allows ATVs to use our gravel system unrestricted. Paved roads, they can use to get to the gravel system, direct route to the gravel system. Or the board may designate certain paved routes that everyone can use. And that's really been in place for a long time. The board's been able to designate certain routes and Story County's just never done that. We have had a ton of interest, although I hear there's a group wanting to approach the board. And two, Story County's traffic council are probably a bit higher than most of the counties in the state. So putting ATVs on our paved system is a little more concerning in Story County than most, so. But uh for the time being, there isn't anything you have to do, but you can add roads to the paved system and um. Somebody brings a proposal for that, we can definitely take a look at that. From what I see, there's nothing to do in the short term on that. The second one is Senate File twenty-three seventy-six. That again, it seems like every year we get hit with a new increased load bill. The bad news is it allows a twelve percent increase over what's currently allowed. And as you know, we just got everything rerated on our bridges. So this is probably gonna lead to another rerating of all our bridges, which isn't cheap. And a lot more signage out there. The good news, we have until twenty twenty-five to comply. What they have in mind is a system that a hauler can go to and get a statewide permit online, and it's approved. Why that's so difficult is the DOT has a system where all their bridges are put into electronic database, and they can just hit a button here to here, and they can rate the bridges, because the bridges are all in a system. Our county bridges are not in a system. We have a lot more variety of bridges in the state those two, so it's hard to rate our bridges for a bunch of different type of loadings. So the only way to do that is to have a consultant put all of our bridge information in a system that can be a computer system that can rate bridges, and that's a very expensive process. I don't know if they fully realize what they were asking for in that. There is some proposals for trying to find some grants to get that done or something, but we have until twenty twenty-five, but even then, it's gonna be hard to get a system in place that can.
A system that all counties will participate in, not a system per county.
Yeah. And that's. At state as well. It would give you a state and a county permit. What happens now is they go to state and get a permit, they come to county and get a permit, and they give me the route, and I check the route, and if there's one bridge on that route I'm concerned with, we have to get that truck load rated for that load individually. Well, no, not the county side. They just want us to participate. I think this DOT realizes how difficult that's gonna be to accomplish.
Yeah.
A couple of these bills, they flat out commented that they were not asked for their opinion on the bill. So it just got approved, and now we deal with consequences.
Yeah, somebody said, somebody said administer system, right?
Yeah.
So I think it's my question kind of on Linda's. Do they go into one system, or are they gonna have a state system and a county system, and then who oversees?
I believe the all systems permit, the goal is to have one go-to spot. Which I think the DOT would probably run that software. But all of our information has to be input into the system, and that's the difficult part. We just, we don't have that data right now.
Once it was put in the system, would that save more time and county engineers' time having to go through the routes?
Oh, definitely. It'd be great to have, be all in favor of that. It's just, it's gonna be very costly to get that done.
And is there any money for that?
They're searching for grants, and there's often your possible funding sources, but.
You mean they're requiring it, that the legislature's requiring it but not funding it?
Oh, yeah. The frustrating part of my, also when all these load, we continue to get load increases on our pavements, and now we're up to like ninety-six thousand pounds, we can go on. Interstate systems capped at eighty thousand pounds, period. And so you can go on much heavier loads on the, so trucks are actually getting off the interstate system, go on county roads, just because they can go heavier. It's destroying our systems. Yes. So we're we're approaching whatever we can with studies that have been done on how these increased loads are really damaging our system.
Eighty thousand?
Yeah, the interstate's never allowed over eighty thousand pounds without a special.
So state and county roads are ninety-six?
Uh, it depends on the types of trucks. There's a lot of different, but yeah, it's mostly up to that.
State also, or just county?
Um, yeah, state, there's different loading charts in the code for county roads and state roads, but they're fairly similar. Similar, it's the interstate that's state doesn't control the interstates as much.
Ninety-six thousand pounds.
This twelve percent increase, I'm not exactly sure what that brings everything up to. I think it's around the ninety-six thousand pounds, but it's all based on the truck configuration, so it gets very complicated. Um, the engine brake signs. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. We placed one out on Riverside, believe that was last year, to try to slow some of those trucks that were going down the hill without using their engine brake. It's, they're quite noisy. But we did have another request this year to add two more, one on North Dayton, and then one on E twenty-nine, front of the Mobile Home Park area. We did get these signs ordered. That was my concern of putting the first one out. People see signs like that, then they want them everywhere, and we don't have an ordinance for engine brakes, so I don't wanna get these two spread out in the county. So if all possible, I'd like to limit it to these two new ones, and I can't imagine, there's gonna be too many more requests, but you never know when people see the sign, they might want it, but you get those in the future, it'd be best to try to limit them. And you can kind of explain to them why the ordinance is difficult to enforce.
As the general neighborhood, the same trucks basically, it's just.
Yeah.
Do you know if it's having any impact?
I haven't heard anything directly either way. Yeah, I would assume they would have a little impact. Sometimes they can have the opposite effect, because truckers don't like those signs. You search that online, you can see some of that as well. It's like, well, if you don't have an ordinance, you can't enforce it anyways, so. Um, Nevada Sewer Project, Nevada's moving forward with that sewer line. Unfortunately, they moved it outside this fourteen right away, which is great. Their project did get delayed a bit. I'm not exactly sure why. So that won't start till next season, and they'll, they'll have a couple of road crossings on our gravel roads. We'll have to work with them on, but that's still in the works. DOT Construction. They have a construction project on sixty-five to replace a bunch of box culverts. I have not heard anything new on that. I thought it'd been started by now, but that will actually close sixty-five, so there'll be detours in place, but like the other ones, it sounds like that's been delayed as well. Not sure why. I've already talked about the E fifty-seven and Highway sixty-nine Turn Lane Project. Again, E fifty-seven will be closed for one to two months while they do that intersection work. Sixty-nine will not be closed. That's the way I understand it. It might be restricted in ways at times, but not closed. That's where I commented this being delayed now will most more than likely overlap with the R thirty-eight overlay work, which will not be ideal for traffic south of Ames. Uh, job openings. We did finally get our engineering technician filled. We weren't able to get an outside applicant for that, so we promoted Dylan Sanders from the maintenance division, brought him over. We're gonna pretty much have to train him from the ground up. That's the bad news. The good news is he's getting along very well so far, so I think it's gonna work out great. He's already taken one DOT certification class and had no problem with it. So starting out on a good note there, and I expect that to continue. Uh, we were able to fill three of our open maintenance positions just recently. One started last week, and the other two should start hearing the next month. A little concerned about getting applicants there with truck drivers being hard to find right now. We are getting a lot of applicants from the DOT, which we did in the past, and we're getting a lot of comments that they just wanna get off the interstate system. And I don't completely blame them for that, the high speeds out there, scare them, pound snow and stuff like that. So we're benefiting from that, but the DOT is gonna need to have employees as well. So hopefully, they don't have issues keeping employees. Um, it's always been fairly similar, but I think I also heard some recent comments, the last negotiation, they're no longer union. And they did not get a good increase the past, I think, this spring, and that's, I think, also caused some applications come our way as well, so. Um, and lastly, just comment on the summer help. We always, in the past five years or so, got a lot more difficult to find summer help, and now with the wage situation everywhere, we only had one applicant, and we got him hired. We did have one come up recently. We were able to add one more, fortunately, another job fell through for them. So we do have two helping now, but we're fifteen. Some counties, Lynn, in particular, they're offering twenty. They're still having difficulty finding help, but I think we'll have to increase our wage next year again, just to get get our right-of-ways mowing and stuff. That's mainly what our summer help are doing, and we have a lot of thousands of miles to mow. We have a thousand mile system. They gotta mow both directions. It's a lot of mowing to be done. So that's probably something we'll be looking at next year again. That's all I have. Any questions?
Appreciate all that you've done. Certainly got some other challenges here. Yeah, I was out of town also, and the broke blew up, and I, I was just
You probably saw.
incredibly impressed, so with how swiftly you and your team took care.
Yeah, thanks. We did get on as quickly as we possibly could, and you probably saw the sheriff's post on Facebook. It's like to thank them. That really helped get the word out, because it's hard to get the word out on what's going on out there. So we had them post an update later on as well, because there was a lot of comments, so generated a lot of a lot of exposure for that. So that was really the best way to get the word out of what was going on, because understandably, a lot of confusion at time in both directions. Out of town are closed. That's pretty rare.
Right, and I know it's super time-consuming to be the rep for
Sure. Yes, they did warn us that this is gonna be probably very time-consuming with the number of grants opening up and keeping track of them all, but hopefully we'll be able to find employee that can manage the grant side of it and all that, because we've dealt with it some. You can ask Leanne, the whole grants portal and everything. It's not an easy thing to deal with.
If it's a branch you're used to working with, and it's a brand-new grant opportunity, and all the requirements are different, whatever it can be. I have a question about the corn stocks.
Yeah.
You said, because differences in farming, is it there's, there's more out there? Is it how it's being taken off the fields?
It's what's being left on the fields. They leave a lot of that stover-type stuff on the field to work its way in. They didn't used to do that quite so much. I don't know what they call that, but that was one of the issues when Verbio came in and DePauw, they're taking a lot of the bales, right about the time they were trying to leave more of that debris on the fields. They were bailing it up and hauling it away, so the farmers didn't necessarily like that, because that was their system was to incorporate that into their soil.
And that's what, Verbio supposedly doesn't take as much as you want it.
Oh, yeah, probably not quite as much. Yeah. They try to leave as much out there as they can, and yeah, I think they've reduced that a little bit to try to give them a little more out there. The other issue is it was earlier in the spring, so there's no crops out there, and it's just bare ground with it sitting there, so it floats to the top, and it all gets washed off. If you have the crops out there, it kind of holds it in place on the field a little bit better. Yeah, that would help as well.
Yeah. But it sounds like you're gonna be on the corn stocks for a lot of years.
Yeah, I don't expect that to change.
I was just wondering, you know, when, if we do get that site, I mean, you know, is it worth trying to actually do something to compost them, not just I mean, the compost sun, it'll be really slow.
Yes.
There might be some ways to get some newer
That site would be big enough, we could manage it a little easier if we do get that site, and two, we could we could, we could burn it and add to it. We can't burn the big pot. As you know, we'd had another site start on fire again. And once that starts, the whole site's gonna burn pretty much, and it can burn for a couple of weeks, so we can't have that, so we could burn it slowly.
Are the stalks something that could run through, like a wood chipper?
Um, we have talked to some farmers about, there's a possibility they spread it on their fields. I don't know when the timing of that would be, when they'd want it on their fields, but that's another option we're looking at, is trying to get some to spread back on the fields where it came from.
And if it doesn't go back on the fields, is that something we could just make available? You know, like, is that something that people could use in some way?
It's mostly the corn stock, which I don't think's very useful to people.
It's, if it's run through a chipper? I didn't know how small. It'll do something about the swill till, but it's not any, I don't think that comes up particularly.
I don't, not real sure on that. It's the stock and then the corn cob portion, which yeah, I don't, don't know how well they grind up and be of real use for it, but we're looking to that, see if there's options. Um, back to the grant thing a little bit. I forgot to mention one thing. The other thing we're finding difficult about that is like that forty-seven million dollar grant, we submit that. The way things are kind of set up now, one county has to take responsibility for that entire forty-seven million dollars. So that's another issue we're trying to work around, how we're gonna even be able to find somebody that's willing to do that, and who can actually, because it's a reimbursement program. You have to, one, come up with the money to pay for this. And two, one county's gotta take responsibility for the entire grant application. That's another. Another reason why this, I think, the majority of these funds are gonna get pushed to larger communities and stuff that can
Right.
manage these types of projects better. Hi, anything else?
Nothing, no major problems.
Um, still got a rash of people running into our bridges. Had another one over the weekend, tore off the entire bridge rail, three-span bridge. Another one, a month or two before that, but they're fixable. It's not doing any structural damage so far on the bridge, but we've had a couple of those recently again. Unfortunately, drunk drivers. Such a rash of that right now, but getting off, they like to get off on the gravel roads. Hit the bridges.
Well, there's probably not necessarily more drunk drivers, since it's truck trackers are probably texting.
That's a problem as well.
Maybe like, oh.
Kind of gets back to life. Some people wanna get off, truck driving off the interstate here.
Yeah.
As far as other bridge issues, I mean, we're doing some bridge repairs as well, patching things up, but we haven't had anything new pop up. The one I didn't put in here up, probably my next court report, have a little more, the one that heads back to Angel Art Tree. That one's gonna have to be addressed at some point. It does get inspected here again this winter, so I might wait to see what that inspector report shows. It's getting close. They're gonna come back and say, recommend closure, I think, before too long. There is a couple of farm fields on that side too, but Ames, when we talked about this a few years back, they did say they would allow those farmers to use. They have a private road that comes in the opposite direction, but they would need permission to use that. They said they would at that point. Yes, they have access. They just, employees don't, it's a lot more gravel, I think, to get around for employees. Employees don't like to go that way. But there's more repairs that we had, it took me nine months to get a contractor just to come and look at it. That was about two months ago. I finally convinced them to come and look at it. And it's more repairs than what the other button was. We fixed a couple of years back, and they don't even wanna do it. Find that one more. It's just not worth their time. Be smaller repair jobs. Nobody even wants to do them anymore, so it's hard to. Find that one more. It's just not worth their time. These smaller repair jobs, nobody wants to do them anymore. So it's hard to. Find somebody to come in and do it. So. We're probably looking at the option. I need to talk to Mike a little bit more about, we can actually vacate that road and close it. At least Ames has a portion of it now, but. Quarter of a mile and then it's county. We could close, that's where our level B portion starts now. We could maybe close it. Either put a gate or just flat out close it and the landlords can have their own lock on it then. Yeah, don't need access, but they probably don't like all the party and stuff going on either. So they're probably be willing to. They've already put a gate up at the end, but. You can't legally lock it, so they make it look like it's locked, but it's really not. But get to figure that out, I think. Yeah.
Somebody wanted to.
So there was a change in land ownership and so the only one that would be landlocked now would be Natural Heritage Foundation, which. Probably is turned over to conservation at some point. So if Mike's okay with, it kind of follows the. Skunk up the land that they own, so they have other ways to add access to that, I believe. So they might be okay with it. And the DOT says we are allowed to. A vacated road going up to this store bridge doesn't necessarily give public access if we're getting into some safety issues or something. It can be removed if you take it somewhere, somebody buys it. We've explored that option in the past and it would be too costly to brace it up and move it.
Thanks for continuing to work on that one.
Yeah, I've been keeping an eye on it. It's getting a lot more use again all of a sudden. Again, it's the cell phone thing, text all their friends, hey, come back here. Before you just kind of had to know about it. Now you get told about it and everybody shows up there. So we need to put some new signage up again because they. Keep destroying all of our signs that says the road ends. Put those up again, but I think we got that done last week. I think, I think vacating a road is the best solution for safety at this moment.
Planning and development quarterly report. Okay, so second quarter. These are zoning permits. There's a decrease and it's a trend. I would call it a small correction. Reflective of larger trends in the housing market nationally. We had five new dwellings. Which is similar to twenty fifteen levels, twenty sixteen levels. Overly concerned about it because I think we've seen a lot of building activity, especially in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. We're proving over fifty permits a year for new dwellings. I think a lot of it has to do with folks are nervous about increasing mortgage rates. You know, before we had supply issues and, you know, costs of lumber going up. But now with inflation and mortgage rates going up, there's additional concerns. I don't think it'll be too bad because a lot of the houses that we see are are very large luxury homes. Being built. And so I don't think it'll have a great impact on us, but I think, you know, in some of our smaller communities, I am worried about. What this would look like for mid range houses that's trying to be built for apartments or even the impact just on. You know, first time home buyers trying to get out of rentals with with rent prices going up because demand's going to go up on on rentals too. If we're not seeing new homes being constructed. And so again, I'm not that worried about unincorporated story county, but I I think I'd like to look into more maybe. You know, with our housing study that we're working on and the implementation matrix, you know, how this all comes together for. Some of the strategies in that plan in our smaller communities. Good news is, I cannot believe it, we have still a ton of solar arrays getting installed. But after, you know, we've had more solar arrays this quarter than dwellings and sheds. It's really interesting. And the average dwelling value was was not as high as last year, but. Higher than every other year. So we're still seeing really high value dwellings being built, really, really large dwellings typically too. So this is a map of second quarter permits and other activities. The brown are the permits, so that includes anything for a solar array or a shed or a dwelling. Most of the dwellings are in the Irons or Prairie Valley subdivisions. So the Irons is at the Gulf and Country Club north of Ames and Prairie Valley is. Near Gilbert. Some of those don't show up because they don't have addresses yet because they're new. But still a pretty good spread of building activity around the county. Next slide. I think that we have also seen a decrease in development cases because of. You know, larger economic trends, new subdivisions being proposed. Haven't seen a lot of commercial development. Additional use permits. We're not seeing a lot of proposed new uses. We used to see a lot of. You know, new bed and breakfasts and event venues and even new mineral extraction sites being proposed. And we, you know, in twenty seventeen. I think that was a really. Big year for a lot of new development happening in the county and we just aren't at those levels right now. Again, I don't think it's an issue necessarily. It's just an observation. So we have had one annexation and that was the seed complex or seed mill, grain mill. For Iowa State, south of Ames. Yeah. We had one variance for setbacks. We had one residential personal subdivision. To create a second lot, which is, it's it's pretty low. Quite honestly, we usually see, you know, eleven of those a year. And then one commercial site planned for an expansion at the Roland Veterinary Clinic. Go to the next slide. With a decrease in development cases and permitting activity, we have done a lot of other things. A lot of ordinance amendments. So we completed ordinance amendments to chapter eighty five, ninety one, ninety two and ninety three. We. The, on the debris site, we've, you know, the the property owners, I think we've agreed on an amount at this point. And we've also met with them to discuss the terms of a purchase agreement. So after we get those edits made. The next step would be actually bringing the purchase agreement to the full board. So I'd anticipate that happening in the next month. So that's exciting. Thanks. Yeah. I went to a week long FEMA flood plane training. We've made a lot of progress on a code enforcement case adjacent to Sopers Mill. That's actually going to go to court. And Ethan and I will be giving you an update on that sometime in the future, but that's one we've been working on for three or four years at this point. Ames Urban Fringe Plan has taken a lot of time. We completed public outreach and we're going through the comments now. And then we're still doing, you know, a decent amount of property research and conceptual reviews for development cases. It's just that those aren't. Resulting in actual applications. Folks are interested, but maybe holding off. Next slide. So this is our work program for the year. I just wanted to point this out because I think we're making some pretty good progress on actually getting all of the high priority items done. So the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, I'd anticipate that wrapping up by the end of the year. And same with our construction demolition landfill, temporary debris site. Minimum levels of service, that that would be an amendment to chapter eighty seven of our code, so subdivision code. That should follow the fringe plan wrapping up. And we presented our new sensitive environmental areas regulations to the conservation board last night. And we'll be moving forward with public outreach in the next month or two and then get those proposed amendments in front of you by the end of the year. We also wrapped up again item five on our work program, which was amending the land development regulations, those four other chapters. Item six, review of chapter ninety, conditional uses will occur after the fringe plan has wrapped up. And so the next big thing we take on after we get through some more fringe plan. And natural resource updates would be the code enforcement position for our smaller cities. So I'm looking forward to starting that in the next quarter before the end of the year. Any questions? Yeah, that's how we called it in the work program. So I didn't, I haven't changed it since, but it's the temporary debris site. Yeah. Yep.
Um, I thought just that conservation, I saw the work that you had done on natural resources issues. But I think you're doing a good job. You could, you could talk about that forever and you could get it to the point, I said, let's not let them be the enemy of the good. Because I think there's, you know, we need to realize what you're staffing up. And that you've got so many things that there's, you can't be experts on every single tree.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're kind of getting because we as people are really, really concerned about conservation and that we have native species and all of that, but. I think it's going to be a bit.
Yeah. Appreciate it. I I do, you know, I will keep you updated. We will, we'll be sending a mailing. To property owners that have environmentally sensitive areas on their property and letting them know what's proposed to be changed. Having a series of open houses again. Similar to the fringe plan where they can come talk to us, do a presentation. I think there's a lot of support for environmental resources in the county, but we have to balance that with property rights. And we have really tried to walk that line with the proposed ordinance. So I think the key will be communicating that. You know, we've worked hard to make sure the proposed ordinance won't. If we're just building a dwelling on a property, take away that ability, right? So it really focused on limiting natural resources protections when you're proposing to do a subdivision or a conditional use permit, something. New and larger. So we'll be working on that messaging.
That vicious work plan, I think you said that when you adopted it, you adopted it, but you're getting a lot done.
Yeah. I'm pretty surprised.
It's exactly as I predicted.
Thanks.
Moving on to other reports, Story County Quarterly, financial report update.
Hello, thanks for hanging in there with us. Oh, we got a clock wrong, huh? Okay, so as I do every quarter, here's the quarterly report for the, for the ending of the fiscal year. I have not completed all your budget history books or have not put all the documents in your budget history books yet, but that's on my agenda for. Next few weeks to get done. As you can see, overall, we did really well. Seventy six percent of the budget was spent. That's obviously impacted largely by the fact that we did only, we spent less than a million of the ARPA funds, so. That's, there's a lot of dollars sitting in there than that. That haven't been spent. Fund balances are on the bottom. Tells you where we're at for ending fund balance. As you can see, the general and the supplemental ended very healthy. Now there's quite a few dollars that were assigned also, so I I have that subtracted out of there, obviously. Before I put that number in there, but there are some carryover funds that I'm. And I'm going to be amending into the next budget, next month, probably. Yes.
So the fund balance, general fund, the fourteen million, does that include or not include?
That does not include our bar. There's a separate fund there. If you look at the, there's a sub fund ARPA eight point five.
Yeah, I was just making.
Oh, okay. They're separate. I I list them separate here. So you're very, so yes. Yes. Correct. Yeah, if you look at the last form, it was in my document. The fourteen point eight is made up of. It's it's split out there on that last ending fun, ending fund balance breakdown for you. So. Two point two million. Assigned nine hundred and twenty seven restricted, six hundred and ninety. Committed, unassigned, ten point nine nine.
You're not supposed to add up about fourteen million, is what you're saying.
Well, they, if if you. So the two point. Yes, they do add up to it. Although. That's two point two. Oh, that totals three point eight plus. Okay, so look to the left. It says three point eight, six, seven. On my breakdown. On the last page. To the left of the two point two. So if you add those and the ten point nine, they add up to the fourteen point eight. Okay, I'm showing what twenty five percent would be. So twenty five percent would be five point two million. Okay.
Yep, yep, yep. I just didn't have to pay you.
Eight million is.
Committed, restricted and assigned added together. Let's see. As we talked about earlier, the mental health, M H D S fund is zero as it's has to be. Rural Services Fund came in good at forty three percent. There's five hundred and seventy six. Thousand eight hundred and ninety that I show as assigned. That whole fund is restricted, so that's for our purposes, basically that it's assigned, but it is the leftover local option sales. Or it's the remaining leftover forty percent local option sales tax, which was like two hundred thousand higher than we anticipated. Again, our revenues were really nice in the local option sales tax. That seems to be the trend. Collecting online. Secondary roads fund, he always spent seventy five percent. He has a very substantial ending fund balance. He talked about that earlier and told you that. His. A bonded money, I don't have, look, showing individual here on this fund balance status. It's on the. It's on the, it's on my numbers that I will put in your budget books. But that is, there's 724,533 left of that bonded money. So he is, has asked a couple of times and mentioned it to you today, that he's going to use that for some other projects, and, and that's fine. It's been cleared by our bond council, so we're good with that. So I will be amending that into his budget also, so that he can spend it this year, hopefully. Not included in your, not included in your secondary roads fund balance, no, because it's a separate fund. Revenues, we came in a little over, barely over 100% of revenues budgeted, just barely. I am working on, I started the quarterly ARPA report and ran screaming from billing, so on Thursday, Thursday, I think, Wednesday, Thursday. I thought I had it all done. It looks like it's fine, but it's still got a couple of check marks that it wants more information, and I don't know what it wants, because there's no help, but I will, I will attack that. I think I decided I'll attack it tomorrow. Today's halfway shot, I'm not gonna. And Lisa wouldn't do the reporting for me, just so you know. I thought it would be really good for her to, you know, try to get some practice, yeah, because she's also yeah, she'll be there for more. No, you don't want to. I don't think you want to learn the words I'm saying. There's no, there's no help toolbar at all. None. Now, there's all kinds of help out there, as far as, we've updated this, we've updated that, we've updated this. Here's a new, here's new instructions. They're useless. Right, in the system, there's no help. There's no help bar. I can't figure this out. Help me. Financially, we're in really good shape, yes. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring forward a budget amendment here real shortly for all the projects that are getting carried over and getting finished, whatever, because we have them in conservation facilities. A lot of ARPA, obviously, I'm gonna move forward. I have updated the ARPA finances budgeted on the S drive. Leanne and I talked briefly in the hallway yesterday about it, but I've put actual FY22, what we actually spent in FY22 on all the projects is in there, and so now everything got moved to FY23, because we're gonna be amending. And, and it's updated for what is, what the balance is that has not been right. I think it's 1.4, but I'm not positive. I think so. Yeah, I'm pretty sure revenue loss is 1.4 at this point in time. It is finances, but dot budgeted. Finance budgeted zones. Does it start with finances? If you go to the revenue loss tab. Like I said, if anyone wants to take over the quarterly reporting, I'll be glad to hand that over.
That's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda, would we not take any action on comments due to requirements of local meetings, or maybe so in the future? Anyone wishing to make public comment, raise your hand up soon. Okay, closing public comment number two, leaving on to the is on assignments, can we make updates? Back to the first. An ARPA meeting tonight. Right now, I have planning and zoning meetings, 10:20, Thursday, early morning, meeting in the office. ISAP, the natural opioid settlement webinar, I've done all the others, and I did forward that on to Ethan and Tim. I have on Monday, the 18th, product connections pollution. AM meeting tonight at 6:00. Meeting zoning tomorrow. Meeting with our watershed coordinator Thursday. And Friday, meeting with our emergency management coordinator to work on hiring a new deputy coordinator. Also probably gonna be working with somebody on some ISAP legislative. So. A couple residents about the Ames Urban Fringe, and this afternoon, and then I have boost meeting this evening. Tomorrow, I have a Sam leadership team meeting. The transportation collaboration meeting has been canceled. I have a follow-up meeting with the Niko County Leadership Institute on Thursday. Green Team meeting on Friday. Next week is the Niko annual conference in Colorado, so I'll be here Tuesday. Wednesday.